Welcome, Chatham, to the September 10, 2024 meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. I don't see any notifications here in the room. I don't see any online, so I'll proceed. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. Until March 31, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, pound sign, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And with that, our first order of business is to establish a quorum. Mr. Metters.
Present.
Mr. Dykens.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Shell is present, and Mr. Nacastro.
Present.
This evening, we have something of an elaborate agenda. We have minutes of July 9, 2024. We have public announcements and agenda requests. We have a report from the Director of Public Works regarding Chatham Wells, PFAS, and drinking water testing, et cetera. We have two public hearings. The first is the fiscal year 2025 tax classification hearing, and the second is a Traffic Safety Committee recommendation with respect to five changes that are being recommended by the Traffic Safety Committee. We will then go to public comments on the business agenda. The business agenda consists of, number one, considering a proposal to amend the town's budget and financial management policies. Number two, considering a request to remove the no parking signs in front of 513 Main Street. Number three, considering acceptance of a memorial bench donation at the Old Mill Boatyard. Four is considering an outdoor display of goods and sales at 632 Main Street. Five is considering acceptance of a tree donation, of trees donated, proposed to be donated at Veterans Field. Six is considering acceptance of a donation of $50,000 to the Tree Production Bylaw Revolving Fund. And seven is considering acceptance of a donation of road plates over the tight gate on the Morris Island causeway. Eight is, I think that's the next one, is considering a second reading of the electric vehicle public charging station policy. And finally, nine is, we have considering committee appointments for two committees, the Conservation Commission and Cultural Council. And then finally, we have an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding 32 Mill Hill Road. And with that, I will go back to inviting a motion on the minutes of July 9.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Mr. Nacastro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three. The first is on page three, and maybe you caught this, Kathy, in the last full paragraph toward the bottom of the page, the reference to the Evaluation Committee meeting on June 11th, I think it's June 5th when that vote was actually taken. Then on page seven, I do have a sentence I wish to insert. In the, at the end of the third full paragraph, after the phrase was discussed, I want to insert the following. "It was stated that a financial analysis should have been done," comma, "and that reliance on a rental model versus ownership for the Buckley property was a lost opportunity." I'll read that back. "It was stated that a financial analysis should have been done, and that reliance on a rental model versus ownership for the Buckley property was a lost opportunity." And the final edit is on page nine, but you may have caught this, the third line, the word "negation" I think is, should be "negotiation."
Ooh, good catch.
Thank you. You didn't catch that?
I didn't catch that, no, I didn't. Good for you.
Thank you.
I just have one, and I did check the tape to confirm this. On page 23, I know you have this, Kathy, the vote on Mr. Burlingame indicates that I voted no. That's not right. I voted yes. Any others? With that, we will take a vote. Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Next, public announcements and agenda requests. Any from the board?
No.
Mr. Berman.
Greg Berman, you're Director of Natural Resources. I just wanted to follow up with a notice that was in the main sheet last Friday, that we've actually had some decent progress with the removal of the trees, or about to have progress with the removal of the trees out on the tidal flats. Many of these trees were lost from Morris Island due to erosion. They've been causing hazards to navigation. The town's done what they could to remove the worst ones. All this time, we've worked with the Refuge, Monomoy National Wildlife Refuge. And starting on the 12th, there'll be a conversation to talk the plan through with the neighbors on Morris Island. On the September 16th, the refuge will begin actual removal of the stumps and root balls that are on the tidal flats, bringing them onto shore. They'll be cutting them the next day, on the 17th, and then the 18th of September, hopefully that will be the last day where they do all their chipping, cutting, and removal of that material off-site. DBW has agreed to help with some of that transport over to the transfer station, but this has been something that we've been very much encouraging and looking forward to. The refuge has been accepting of our immediacy, but federal government doesn't always move as fast as we would want. But that said, they are planning to remove most, if not all, of the trees on those flats. And then we do have a $10,000 partial mitigation for 97 Tulippee. They were hoping to use to get the trees that are in deeper water or further offshore. So we do have a plan in place to try to remove the immediate trees, and then we'll be working with the refuge in the off-season to look at future seasons. This is going to be something that we need to keep our eye on in the future.
Thank you. Any other public announcements or, and/or agenda requests from the public? I don't see any online. Do you, Jill?
No, I do not.
So, Mr. Failey. Wells, PFAS, drinking water testing, and pumping update.
Good afternoon. Rob Failey, Director of Public Works. I feel naked without a laptop up here, so I apologize. I just gave them the report just before this meeting, so hopefully they'll navigate for me. So just want to go through the temporary treatment at Well 5. It continues in full operation for the summer through the temporary GAC filter, and we'll take it offline for the winter sometime around Indigenous Peoples' Day. The permanent treatment at facility for Wells 5 and 8. If we go to the pictures on the next slide, the two-inch-thick foundation slab was placed on August 15th. That's the top picture. And the bottom-left picture, over 60 concrete trucks and two pumper trucks poured over 650 cubic yards of concrete. Concrete formwork and reinforcing steel continues to be installed. Preparation of the foundation wall, concrete placement, and that's the picture to the right, shows the slab placed, and they'll do the walls in two separate pores. If we jump to page three, please. Wells 10 and 11, well 11 is online and functioning, contributing up to 300,000 gallons per day. We are still waiting for approval from the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs to activate Well 10. We did consult with Town Council, and until all conservation easements are in place, we cannot pump water from that well. So they expected to have a review of that conservation easement language sometime this fall, is the best I can get from them. So the Chatham water pumping status for the month of August, Wells have been pumping 13 to 18 hours per day. Storage tank hit low-level alarm 10 times this month. Seems like a lot. It's probably not too unusual for an August. We tend to have drier weather in August, but 10 is alarming. Sorry. All the low-level alarms are still occurring on either a Monday, a Wednesday, or a Friday. Water sampling, 30 bacteria samples. There were no bacteria in any of the samples that were sent to DEP. And PFAS 6 samples were taken from Well 5, and those were non-detect. Other things just ongoing, we started our hydrant painting, and Viola is working with us. We have a water service material data that's needed for the lead and copper database. We need to report that to DEP by the middle of October. So we sent out a kind of a survey for residents. We had over 750 or so responses, which is pretty, pretty good. So we're going to send out another survey at the next water billing cycle. If we go to the next slide, please. Pumping comparison, August 2023 versus 2024, increase of a little over 5 million gallons for the month, or 6.8%. If you remember, last year, we had voluntary watering restrictions in place, so that could be some of that difference.
Mr. Dykens.
Just a quick one, Rob. On August 25th, 1.6 million gallons pumped, 100% above where we were last year. Any notion about that? Were we back flushing or anything, or testing?
Typically, this time of year, we're trying to just supply the demand. I'm not sure what day of the week, the 25th was.
I don't, yeah.
It could have been like a Monday or Tuesday last year, and maybe it was a Saturday or something this year. I'm not sure.
It just does jump out at you, 100% increase. It's, it's a lot.
It is a lot. I mean, we do have a lot of daily fluctuations.
Yeah.
But yeah, 100% does kind of jump out at you, doesn't it?
I'm going to look at the date. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. If we go to the next slide, the pumping comparison graph.
Sunday. It's a Sunday.
The 25th is a Sunday?
Yeah.
We are seeing, for some reason, higher usage on Sundays more than any other day, and I'm not sure if it's turnover day for rentals, or...
Typically, Saturday, yeah.
Typically, yeah. So I'm not really sure. I don't, I don't have a good explanation for that.
Thank you.
The pumping comparison chart, blue on the upper chart is August of 2023, pink is 2024. It just, again, just shows, different way to show the daily fluctuations that we have. And then down below, it's the same thing in a bar chart. Blue is August 23, orange is August 24. The next slide shows really, shows Wells 1 through 7 on the left-hand side of that chart are very high-performing. They were running every day in August. Same with well number nine. Well 11 had a few fits and starts. We're still working out some of the bugs there, but it's still contributing quite a bit, almost 5.7 million gallons for the month of August. And then the pumping graph below, it just shows the effort, level of effort for each of those wells for the month. On the next slide, start 2024, year-to-date pumping. The third column in from the right is what we pumped so far this year at 336 million gallons. Last year's pumping was 349 million gallons, so even though August was 5 million gallons higher, we're still about 13 and a half million gallons less than last year. And then again, the chart at the bottom is just the level of effort year-to-date. On the next slide is the USGS observation well data. One thing that's concerning to me on here is, you know, as we've been talking throughout the summer, it seemed like the, we were climbing out of the drought pretty well, but you can see how steep that decline, that seasonal decline line is to the right. It's really taken a steep dive, this beautiful weather we're having, we're paying a price for it because we're not getting a lot of rain to replenish the groundwater. So what we have to really watch is how far does that trough go in the fall before it starts to recover, when we get some of that, that fall, early winter rain that helps us reestablish that. Same thing for Brewster down below, very steep seasonal decline. Again, we're never out of the woods, but hopefully we'll get some good, steady rain to help replenish that. And my final slide is just the five-year pumping comparison. We're pretty close to average, so 81 million gallons in August, 406 hours of pumping. If we go back two years previous, we've had watering restrictions, so they may not be good years to go by, but the two years previous to that, August 20 and August 21, we're down from those levels of effort. So that's all I have for you. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good report. So, public hearings. Do we have a notice of public hearing for the tax classification? I don't think we do. We do not, do we?
It's not required, and that's noted in the staff report.
Okay, so, Ardell Kelly?
Good evening. We're here tonight, as we do every year annually, after our values get set by the Department of Revenue, to present to you the options for setting the tax rate. According to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 50, Section 50 of the Acts of 1982, and Chapter 91 of the Acts of 1983, the Select Board is annually charged with determining the allocation of local property taxes by the adoption of a residential factor, open space discount, residential exemption, and/or adopting a small business exemption. But before we get into the different options, I just want to give you a brief glance of how the values have turned out. As you can see from your agenda packets, that this year, we have a 10.7 decrease compared to last year, so our values are only going up by 6.3% on average. So we're starting to see, values are still going up, don't get me wrong, I like to say they weren't, but they're not going up at the pace that they were. Also, we have a tentative, now that our values have been approved, a tentative tax rate of 3.47, which is a 10% decrease from last year. Our...
Dale, I'm sorry, 10 cent?
10 cents.
Okay.
Sorry. 10 cents. Now, our value percentages, as far as in our classes, have not really changed. We're still sitting there at 94% for our residential, and with the CIP, commercial, industrial, and personal property, we're at five, just a little over 5.5. So off we go to the different options. So your first decision is to vote a residential factor of one, so that each class maintains 100% of its value tax share, and the shift of the tax burden from residential and open space, or shifted to commercial, industrial, and personal property. On the matter of open space, the town of Chatham does not have anything designated as open space. Actually, there's one community out of the 351 that do have a classification of open space, and that's Bedford. On the matter of the residential exemption, the residential exemption grants an exemption up to, recently, there's been a change to 50% of the average residential property value for all residential property owners who are here year-round. The burden basically shifts within the residential class with the year-round residents having a lower rate, and the seasonal and higher-end homes' rate would be increased. There's also the small commercial residential. With the result of legislation in 1994, this exemption allows the Select Board to exempt up to 10% of the assessed value of commercial properties that are assessed less than a million and occupied by businesses with less than 10 employees. Now, the problem, the weakness of the small business exemption is the fact that it does not benefit the small business owner, it benefits the landlord. Now, the Board of Assessors met on August 27, 2024, and they have voted to move that the town of Chatham continue to tax all classes at the same rate by adopting a factor of one, and to reject the residential exemption and the small commercial exemption. Do you have any questions?
Dean, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dale, I think the Assessors' vote was on September 5th. You said August 27.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask, with respect to the residential exemption, just for the benefit of the public, you mentioned at that meeting the break-even point or the tipping point.
Yes.
Where...
The break-even and the tipping point is 3,750,000, and we currently have 155 properties with a Chatham zip code that would be affected.
Those would be Chatham taxpayers.
Yes, correct.
Chatham residents, year-round residents that could be affected by that.
Correct. There's 155.
And how does that 3.75 million compare to the prior, this past year?
This past year, I don't have that figure in front of me, I'm sorry.
It was something under 2 million?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So if I could just follow up, I know Jeff has a question, but just on this subject, the 3.75 number that you just quoted, is that with a 35% exemption?
No, that's the break-even point all across the board, whether it was 10%.
Oh, it doesn't matter?
No.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Ardell, I just had a question on the residential exemption. Give us examples.
Ardell, I just had a couple of questions on the residential exemption. You gave us in our package some examples of if we're at a 10% level, then at a 35% level. And did I hear you just say we could go to a 50% level?
Correct. And I do know in time to put that in the packet, but I have done the sheets out, so just give me one moment.
No problem. I just would, you know...
And I can tell you, yeah, what the tax rates will be for that.
Yeah, that'd be great. And the savings to a residential...
Yeah.
Year-round taxpayer at a 10% level is fairly de minimis at $334, if I read your detail correctly, but at the 35% level, it gets to be more material, if you will, at 1, you know, 1,200, call it $1,300. I just wonder what that number is for the 50% level.
$2,009.
$2,009 at 50%. So that gets to be...
And the tax rate would go to 439.
For the overall tax rate, for the, okay. Then another question.
For the residential.
One other question on the personal property taxes. How many, how many do we actually assess personal, how many residents or non-residents, I should say, do we assess a personal property tax? And how much money do we bring in?
The money that we bring in, I'm not really quite sure, as far as how many people we currently tax. It's about 4,280 people, accounts, I should say.
Okay, out of 70, how many?
7,404.
400, yeah. So would you say 4,000 out of 7,000?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we also have the personal property exemption. So your dwelling, it's based on your building value, so you would have to have a building value of 500,000 or more before you even got a personal property tax. You still might be a secondary homeowner, you know, but you will not get a personal property bill.
So who does get a personal property bill?
Anyone with the value of a building that's 500,000 or more. Or in a condominium, the value would be a million or more.
And you're a non-resident?
And, pardon me, yes, and you're a non-resident.
All resident, and a non-resident. That's an important point, yeah.
Yep.
But it also, am I wrong, that it also applies to non, to corporate ownership?
And to businesses as well, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Can I just ask a follow-up? So how, do we know how many properties are actually paying a personal property tax?
Yes, that's what I was saying, the 4,200, yeah. Yep, currently at this moment in time.
That excludes people that are exempted because of the value of their house.
Pardon me?
That excludes the people that are exempted because of the value of their house, so 4,000...
Yes. But we also had to take off, you can't, we can't just assume that, because in the residential class, on the 7,404, you also have vacant pieces of land that we would be including, obviously, for the residential exemption. That's why you see on the charts that I gave you for the 10 and the 35 in there, the eligibility might be a little bit different than the actual count.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, please. Ardell, and I forget, and I apologize, but what other towns in the Cape have passed a residential exemption?
The other towns on the Cape that have passed a residential is Province Town, Wellfleet, Truro, and Barnstable. Now, those towns, I just spoke with those towns just morning, and their splits, the lowest they go is 65%, and the highest they go is obviously in Antucket at 80/20, and Province Town at 79. at eighty-twenty, and Province Town at seventy-nine percent for seasonal.
Antucket's had it for a while.
They've had it from the very beginning in nineteen ninety-eight.
And P-Town, just off the top of your head, do you, any idea when they passed it?
I want to say it was like five, six years ago now.
When you referenced the eighty-twenty and, and Antucket, what, what did that mean, Ardell?
Eighty percent are seasonal, twenty percent are year-round.
Yeah.
And Wellfleet was the lowest in that, they had sixty-five percent, you know, to thirty-five.
And we are, and we are?
We're sitting there now at, let me just go back, I should know it, at fifty-eight percent seasonal and forty-two percent as year-round. And that's our best estimate.
Yeah.
You know, we try during our certification to send out our forms for people to fill out, that they're required to do under personal property for their contents, so we can have a really, try to get a stronger base of where we stood. But as the Department of Revenue will tell you, that's, that's the hardest thing to predict, is how many people will actually apply.
If I might as well, I'm sorry, but on the Board of Assessors, Mr. Burke is here, has no appetite whatsoever to, to mess with the residential exemption, no appetite.
Who?
The Board of Assessors.
The Board of Assessors, and I don't know, not at this moment in time.
Nick Brown and Mr. Burke.
Correct.
So I, yeah, I just wanted, I'm sorry, please.
I was just gonna say, now with the, the governor putting out, you know, over forty-nine different policies to help out with Affordable Two, there'll be a lot more options out there besides the residential exemption. So something to keep in mind moving forward.
Okay, I, I just wanted to follow up on, on Jeff's questions. The fifty-eight percent today, that, that does, if you, if you know.
That fluctuates, yeah.
It does fluctuate, but it has come down a little bit in the last few years, hasn't it?
Yes, when I first started, over, over nine years ago, it was always sixty, forty, I saw from notes from prior assessors. It kind of maintained that, and then after the pandemic, it kind of dropped, and we're seeing actually more and more people moving into town.
Yep.
So it'll be interesting to see how, if that trend continues, or if it'll stop.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Dean.
I was just gonna suggest, Mrs. Chairman, even though there was no public notice, it is a public hearing, and we might want to invite.
Yeah, no, good point. Any comments from, or questions, or otherwise desire to say anything in the public? I don't see anybody in the room, and I don't see any hands up online, do you, Jill?
I don't, no.
Okay. I think we're good, thank you. Do we want to hear a motion? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the town of Chatham continue to tax all classes at the same rate by adopting a factor of one, and to reject the residential exemption and the Small Commercial Exemption.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nick Castro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
And Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Thank you.
I just have one brief point. I just want to remind you all to sign the L.A. five, and as well, I wanted to let you know that the excess levy capacity this year is three million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifteen cents, and that was in your packet, but I just wanted to remind you.
Thank you very much, Ardell.
Do we have to sign that manually, or can that be signed electronically?
It can be signed electronically.
Do we have to take a vote to approve that?
Do you? No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, yeah. Can you have a reading of the
Sure.
public notice hearing?
Yep. Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing, the Select, Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-four, at five thirty P.M. in the large meeting room at the Town Office Annex two-six-one George Rider Road to consider the following: thickly settled speed advisory sign installation, one sign at Barn Hill Road after the intersection of Harding's Beach Road, two signs with thirty mile-per-hour rider signs on Cross Street placed at the discretion of the Department of Public Works, two new stop signs at the intersection of Cedar Street and Battlefield Road, establish a no parking zone on the west side of Shattuck Place from Cross Street to the parking lot at the rear of Chase Park, installation of radar advisory speed signs, two radar advisory speed signs on Old Queen Anne Road in the area of Winter Set Drive placed at the discretion of the Department of Public Works. These signs are standard size and style and recommend, recommended by the Board, to the Board by the Traffic Safety Committee. All interested parties are encouraged to participate in person or remotely via the link in the posted agenda. Sign the Select Board.
Thank you. I guess the protocol is to invite comment from the public for, I'm sorry, Joan, forgive me, yes, Joan.
Thank you, Joan Craig, the Chair of the Traffic Safety Committee. I want to thank a Lieutenant, a former Lieutenant Andy Goddard for presenting this in, on paper format prior to his retirement. As mentioned, we met on July twenty-fifth to consider these proposals. We recommended the thickly settled advisory on Barn Hill between Harding's Beach and Hunter. One of the reasons is there's a lot more traffic there with a lot of the new buildings there, and also with the boaters going down, and traffic is heavier. Currently, there is one sign on Barn Hill Road near the beginning of by the four-year excavation property, and our committee feels that a second sign is necessary for this area. I don't know if you want to take these separately, or?
Can we take them separate? Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I don't think anybody wants to speak.
So moved.
Yeah, no, no, well, I think we have to offer the public an opportunity to comment if there, if there are any comments, so then I'll take a motion.
So moved.
With respect to the, the first, the, this, the first one?
Yes, Harding's Beach, the, the, standard thickly settled advisory sign on Barn Hill Road after the intersection of Harding's Beach and.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Nick Castro?
Aye.
Next case.
The next item, and you'll see on the screen, Cedar Street and Battlefield. The committee recommends the installation of two new stop signs at the intersection of Cedar Street and Battlefield. This would make the intersection, which includes Stage Neck Road, a three-way, all-way stop intersection, as there is currently a stop sign on Stage Neck Road. We also recommend that the crosswalk on Cedar Street be repainted, refreshed, to improve visibility. The committee considers a request for the installation of speed bumps on Cedar Street and took no action on this request.
Any comment from the public? I will, I'll just say, I'm, I'm very familiar, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead. I think that, that was withdrawn.
And we took no action on that.
Right. I, I was just gonna comment, I'm very familiar with that, I think that's an excellent idea, particularly coming, I guess it's really north on Battlefield, around onto Cedar, is just completely blind, and, and particularly if you're trying to go on to Stage Neck, that, that is an accident looking for a place to happen. So I'll take a motion.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Nick Castro?
Aye.
Next case.
Next is Cross Street. The committee reviewed a request from residents on Cross Street.
I'm sorry, Joan.
I'm sorry?
Moment.
Are you doing Cross Street or Shattuck Place? Cross Street.
Well, Cross and Shattuck, is that right?
Cross Street is next. Shattuck is separate.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The committee reviewed a request from residents on Cross Street for the installation of speed bumps. After discussion, the committee has approved a recommendation for the installation of two thickly settled speed advisory signs with a thirty mile-per-hour rider sign on Cross Street, signs on Cross Street. The specific location of the signs is recommended to be at the discretion of the D.P.W. in accordance with applicable regulations and policies, and I know you also received information from some residents in that area.
So I just have a question here, this is on the agenda, but it's not in the notice. Does that matter?
Thickly settled signs do not require a public hearing technically. I included them all initially as a precaution because of how Lieutenant Goddard submitted this report, so if that one is not on there, it does not impact the public hearing, the stop signs really, and the parking zone are the two that definitely needed to be listed, so you're okay to.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, in the back.
My name is Lucia Quinn, I live at one eighty-six Cross Street, have been there since two thousand and two, and full-time since twenty twenty-one. I want to thank the Traffic Safety Committee for taking the petition of our neighbors regarding the speeds that are traveled on Cross Street, and my neighbors, many of whom are here, and signed the petition as well, and thank you for your recommendation. We did want to make two additional comments, if not for amendment tonight for consideration. We are a very heavily trafficked street all year-round, like several other streets that I'm gonna mention, Steppingstone being one, Sam Rider being another. We are also a shortcut for people coming down Stage Harbor and up Stage Harbor, and I would remind everyone that there is exactly one speed sign on all of Stage Harbor, and it is at the intersection of Bridge Street and Stage Harbor. So by the time people are traveling down Stage Harbor and whipping around the corner onto Cross Street, they are going at excessive speeds, and I'm sure the Enrices who are here tonight and live at that corner can tell you about the screeching tires. Also, coming from town, people tend to accelerate after they get past Chase Park, and you did hear us about that. We just wanted to point out that in addition to being a shortcut all year-round for school buses, for town trucks, for construction, for landscaping, in addition to passenger cars, for at least six months of the year, we are heavily trafficked with baby carriages, bicycles, dog walkers, on a very narrow sidewalk and a fairly narrow street. So the only thing I wanted to point out, in addition to what you have recommended, is that i- if you go to Sam Rider as an example, the speed limit there is twenty-five miles an hour. I don't think anybody travels that, but it is twenty-five miles an hour, and it is posted. If you go to Steppingstone, where there is a thickly settled thirty mile an hour, there is also a radar alert system, so people can see what they're traveling, as there is now on Cedar Street. We, as a neighborhood, in the future, would love to have considered not just the thickly settled sign, but a lower speed limit than thirty miles an hour, and would recommend adding the radar so that people have an understanding of exactly how fast they have accelerated on that street. So that's my public comment. Many of my neighbors are here, if they have anything they'd like to add, I appreciate that. That's it, thanks, Joan.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yeah, go ahead. Brian?
Brian Phillips, three seventy-four Orleans Road. What I want to say is all these signs are kind of eye pollution, and they're not really effective, they're not gonna stop people from speeding. If you want to stop people from speeding, you should probably set up a speed trap, or if you see frequent speeders, write down their license plate and their make and model, and report to the Chatham Police, and they give them a speeding ticket. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Gibbs?
Yes, thank you, Elaine Gibbs. I live at one fifty-two Cross Street, and I'm very pleased that this has come up. I did not sign the petition, I didn't know about it. I would echo what the previous speaker had said. In addition to the commercial vehicles and local traffic and tourists, we also have a lot of walkers, bikers, and runners, because it's part of the loop, and sometimes they're riding in the road, they're walking in the road, they don't use the sidewalk. It's actually like being in a video game, and it's very dangerous, and I had two recommendations. I, I really think that Cross Street is actually like two separate roads. You have it from Main Street to Shattuck, and then you have it from Stage Harbor Road to Shattuck, because of the curve, and people gain tremendous speed. I have seen people going forty-five, fifty miles an hour. I had an, an incident myself where I had my blinker on to make a left into my driveway, and I started to turn, and the car behind me from out of town, he was from New Jersey, passed me on the left in oncoming traffic, and if I had turned one second earlier, I would have been hit broadside at my door, and it, it would have been really serious. I would hope that we could go, do four signs, in other words, have two, one on each, you know, going in each direction, on the, the first section coming from Main Street, and then two on the part coming from Stage Harbor, because otherwise, people aren't gonna know it, and I would absolutely agree, thirty miles an hour is way too high. If you post it for that, and people are driving thirty, it's gonna be really dangerous. So I would hope it could be fifteen to twenty, and then we have maybe four signs instead of two signs. It's a very dangerous road, it is, I, I can't tell you how much traffic, they're all trying to avoid the rotary, so they, they use Cross Street, and it's heavily traveled all year long, but particularly in the summer, and there's a lot of pedestrians, bikers, and runners, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Any comments from the Board, Jeff?
Yeah, it's a really busy road, street, I should say, it's a, it's a, it's kind of the backway out of downtown as well, so I find myself using it all the time. And I would support what you recommended this evening, I also support the use of the, the speed limit radar that says, you know, hey, your speed limit's twenty-five, but you're going forty. Old Comers, I've noticed, is very effective there, you come up the hill at Old Comers, and boom, oh, I'm going too fast, so I find those very effective. I don't know which end you put it on, whether it's the, the high-speed end towards Stage Harbor or not, but I support all your recommendations, if folks want twenty-five miles an hour, that's fine, certainly with me, I would recommend that, and I'm pleased that you didn't go with speed bumps. I, I, speed bumps, I don't, I don't, they're, just, I don't want, I don't really want speed bumps all around town, I really don't. They're nettlesome, there, you have baby carriages, you have people on motorcycles and bicycles, and, and, you know, it's just, just like kind of another impediment, but anyway, I think, hopefully, we can do this without speed bumps, is what I'm saying, thanks.
Sergeant? Malzone, please.
Good evening, Lou Malzone, Deputy Chief of Police. Just to provide some information, there's been some talk lately about the radar sign that was on Cedar Street, it was also on Steppingstone's last week. The department has two new pieces of equipment, one is a digital readout sign that we can move from place to place, the other one is a box that we can mount that doesn't have a digital readout, which lets us get data from those roadways on, you know, traffic, time of day, volume of traffic. So we are testing those, using those, that's why you saw one on Cedar Street last week, Steppingstone's this week, and there is actually one on Cross Street right now, so I just wanted to clarify. It is, it doesn't have a digital readout, but it's giving us data on speeds and volumes, and we'll be able to provide that data.
You don't want to.
Unfortunately, I have to ask the people in the audience, if you want to comment, you, you're gonna have to go up and make a, use a microphone.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we're not telling you where, specifically, for that reason.
So, before you go away, I, I just want to say, I have, I drive Cedar all the time, that's my way home and back, and I thought the, that digital readout was very effective. I, I mean, not only for myself, but, but I observed other, other drivers, you know, really being affected by it, and I don't know how difficult it is to come by those, I don't know how expensive they are, but they do have a really positive impact on traffic, I think. That's been my experience.
They do, and the, and I, and again, where, that's a new unit for us, we're testing it, Cedar Street was one of the first places we had it, you know, the, the reports that it provides you are, you know, have great information on it, breaks down, you know, we had it up there for ten days, so it breaks down by the hour, you know, how many cars, you know, the outliers of speed, the average speed, the eighty-fifth percentile, which was right around thirty, which the speed limit is. So the, the information is great, and that's, that's information that we'll be able to provide, but we are testing those pieces of equipment, but I, but I agree, and that's the feedback we got, that residents on Cedar Street said the placement of that sign seemed to slow people down right away.
I miss it.
We'd like to get more.
Yeah, Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, a few years ago, when the subject of sidewalks on Stage Harbor Road was being considered, I had a conversation with both the former chief and the former deputy chief about the speed limit on Stage Harbor Road. So it's still 30 miles an hour?
It's still thickly settled, 30 miles an hour.
What does it take to reduce it to 25? Just a vote of the board, the select board?
It's make a notification to Mass DOT, the town accepting, I believe it's Chapter 90, Section 17C. There's three steps, those are the first two, and then the signage.
And the same thing would be true for Cross Street?
And would, same thing would be true. And I know the town can adopt to do it on a street-by-street basis, or town-wide in thickly settled areas, which there's quite a few towns in the Cape that have done that.
Yeah. Thank you. I share what Mr. Dyken said about speed bumps, I really don't support them, and I don't think we really want to get into, from my perspective, I don't think we really want to get into that in the town of Chatham, if we can avoid them. I think there are other solutions. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, sir.
While he's coming up, I will say that our committee has talked about in the past the fact that some towns have implemented the 25 mile per hour speed limit in some thickly settled areas throughout the town. We have not brought it up, but might be something to consider.
Sir?
Frederick Nolton of 59 Shattuck Place, I just want to say that I, you know, every day drive along Cross Street, and have not, in fact, observed the speeds described, although if other people have observed them, so be it. I would like to second the comments of a previous speaker, that beyond a certain point, signs, you know, do become visual pollution, and also, you know, beyond a certain point, obstacles in themselves on sidewalks and to bicyclists, but so one may hope that the positioning is, you know, clever, and takes account of that if one has to multiply signs. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments, take a motion?
I'll move to approve. And I would move 25 mile an hour, if we could make that part of the motion as well, on Cross Street.
Can we do that?
I don't know if you can do that tonight for your motion, but if you want to vote the 30 mile an hour, and then direct me to investigate the process for reducing it, for there might require a public hearing, although.
That's kind of what I'm.
It's fine, it's fine.
And, but, and the 30, Cross Street is already 30, is it not?
Yeah, it's thickly settled 30.
Yeah, I think that, so, but maybe let's.
Start there.
Add an agenda request, to put that on the agenda, to discuss reducing Cross Street, or maybe a public hearing to that effect.
Or all streets that are noted as thickly settled.
Yes, 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 well, that's, yeah. Yes, sir.
So, would we want to bring that to the board? Or, as Joanne mentioned, the Traffic Safety Committee was thinking of maybe a future agenda for them, would it be more prudent for them to weigh in on a recommendation of a townwide scenario? I mean.
I think that does, and we also need to factor in what Officer Malzone told us, Deputy Chief Malzone told us about the process with the state. So that has to be factored in. So maybe that is an appropriate thing to refer to the Traffic Safety Committee in the first instance.
So you'll take the motion as it is, and then refer this new part back to us?
And ask you if you would take that up promptly?
Sure.
So.
Done, moved.
Okay, so moved, second? Thank you. For the record, the motion was Mr. Dyken's, the second was Mr. Nacastro, all those in favor, Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Okay, Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from the next item involving Shattuck Place. My property is directly affected. Thank you. I'm going to leave the room.
Okay.
So the next item is Shattuck Place. The committee reviewed a request from a resident on Shattuck Place, requesting the establishment of a no parking zone to allow them to exit their driveway during peak times. The request detailed how vehicles have been parking on Shattuck Place, and the placement of these vehicles prevents residents from easily and safely accessing and exiting their driveway. After discussion, the committee recommends the establishment of a no parking zone on the west side of Shattuck Place, from Cross Street to the parking lot at the rear of Chase Park. Parking would still be allowed on the east side of Shattuck Place. Shattuck Place is a narrow roadway, which does not allow room for parking on both sides, while still maintaining emergency vehicle access for the remainder of the roadway, the rear of Chase Park, and the private roads extending beyond the parking lot. This recommendation maintains the ability to park, but offers control to maintain access.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Harriet Proud, I'm at 9 Shattuck Place. Even though I'm number nine, I'm the first house on Shattuck Place, on the left, on the west-hand side of Shattuck Place. I'm a full-time resident, I've owned my home there since 1995. I've been there full-time since 2015. I have a concern, it seems to be that we're taking this action just for one driveway, which is across the street from Roz Coleman and Allison Coleman's home. It's been under construction for probably, this is the second year, and there has been many trucks and parking there, that has been very difficult, I'm sure, for this resident. And I would just like to maybe work more with the neighbors in the area, to see if there can be a resolution to this, instead of having no parking on the entire street on the east side. And so, also, I think if you put a.
It's the west side.
The west side, I'm sorry, west side. So the west side is going to be no parking, so they would park on the east side, that would, okay. So, the sign is going to say only parking on the west side?
No, it'll say no parking on the west side.
No parking on the west side. So I think that would almost be an invitation for people to park on the other side of the street, the east side, where no one really tends to park anyway, it's all only the landscapers and so forth. The, I live there with, almost, there isn't anyone else there in the winter. It's me, and it's, Joanne Sprague is on Cross Street, and I think there's, Don is on Kent Place. Other than that, there isn't anyone there in the winter. And we have many busy times in the winter here in Chatham. We have the Oktoberfest, we have the Stroll in December, we have First Night, and I think this is going to be an attraction for people to park, where they don't normally park there now. And I would like to see it more in a, more focus to this individual driveway, than to have it on the entire street. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir. While he's coming up, for those of us who are directionally challenged, like me, if you're driving on Shattuck off of Cross toward the park, we're talking, the west side is the right-hand side, is that right? Okay, thank you.
Frederick Nolton of 59 Shattuck Place, again, I have a driveway, obviously, letting onto Shattuck Place. If this proposal is indeed triggered by one construction site, it does seem a, you know, a serious overreaction to, you know, apply a no parking zone to that entire side of the street. On the west side of Shattuck Place, there are, in a row, three very small properties on, you know, handkerchief-sized, you know, plots of land, which have just barely the space to get one car off of the road, and any second car, which might want to, you know, be there temporarily, or any house guests they have would be barred by such a policy. It seems, you know, altogether too interventionist, and indeed, as the previous speaker mentioned, you know, the bigger encumbrance is, in fact, the landscapers' trucks that park on the other side of the road, and there seems to be no proposal to, you know, rule them out. So I cannot really see the purpose of a blanket prohibition like this, which would be a, you know, considerable hardship to at least three of those houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Tina Mead, I live at 17 Shattuck Place, which is on the east side. And I think all we're doing with this proposal is moving traffic from the west side to the east side. And I would ask that the Traffic Committee look at the congestion, especially at the intersection of Shattuck Place and Cross, because those cars whip around, and whether you're parked on the west side or the east side, attention is still needed to be given to that entire street. So I agree that this proposal is, needs more study and more thought given to it. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? The board? Corey?
No, I appreciate the neighbors speaking up and raising some concerns, because that's exactly what the public hearing process is about. And based on, you know, the input I've seen from the residents so far, I'm not ready to act on this. So I'm willing to let it be reviewed further, discussed, analyzed, but I'm not going to move it tonight.
Shari?
I agree with Corey, it's clear that the neighbors have expressed their concerns, and what they feel would be the results of this decision, and perhaps we need to take a better look at, as mentioned, the beginning of the, of Shattuck Place, as what the issues are there.
Jeff?
I hear the public, the neighbors loud and clear, and likely to agree with the prior speakers here. Quick question, are there times when there's parking on both sides of the street, and emergency vehicles would have a difficult time getting to the back of Chase Park and or the windmill area?
It was brought to our attention because of overflow parking from the park, and also overflow parking in all areas in the downtown area, especially during the summertime. And so that's why the concerns were brought to our attention, and we felt that parking on one side versus both sides would be appropriate.
Thank you, yep, I understand.
So, yeah, I'm inclined to go along with my colleagues here. I would like to ask Joan if you had substantial input from the immediate, the immediately affected neighbors in the deliberation process at your committee?
It came to our attention from an individual whose driveway he could not get out of. And again, it was specifically because of the problem with the construction, I will say that. I went down again today to see, and as you go in from Cross, there was no problem, but down from that construction site, there were two very large appliance trucks on that right side, so that if there was parking on the left and the right, there would definitely have been a roadblock. So, yes.
And that was the, sort of, the thinking that generated the decision to ban parking all the way from Cross Street to Chase Park?
That's correct. The gentleman had pictures at our meeting, and there was no way anyone could have gotten out of his driveway because of some of the traffic. And the Traffic Committee, as you know, we've been before you before, and will be before you very soon again, traffic spreading from downtown into the side streets is enormous, and a concern, and that's why we brought it to your attention.
Yeah, well, appreciated. I guess I would just say, I'm of a similar mind here, that we pass on this, and hopefully in your deliberations, you can get comprehensive input from all of the residents of Shattuck Place, so that, you know, if, as when you come back, that's incorporated into whatever decision you bring back.
So you'll send it back to the committee?
So, yes, yes.
Thank you.
I don't think we need a motion for that purpose, do we? So, next item is the institution.
Old Queen Anne Road and the area of Winterset. The committee reviewed a request for speed reduction measures on Old Queen Anne Road in the area spanning from Skyline Drive to Steppingstones. The committee reviewed this request and heard information from DPW and the Chatham Police Department regarding current conditions and speed enforcement. The area is properly signed as thickly settled, and speed enforcement is conducted regularly. The committee feels that this area requires additional measures to help reduce speeds. The committee recommends the installation of two radar advisory speed signs on Old Queen Anne Road in the area of Winterset Drive at the discretion of the DPW. The committee feels that this area of roadway is heavily traveled in a residential area with a sidewalk on one side, and needs additional resources beyond standard signage. And I might add, I think at our last meeting with you, we've seen pickup of traffic in that area because of, especially, trucks and delivery vehicles bypassing the road circles on Route 28, and going in this route instead. And so there has been quite a bit of heavy traffic there. Thank you.
Okay. Anything from the public? The board?
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Okay, yep.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken?
Aye.
And Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very comprehensive. Public comments on the business agenda. Ms. Gibbs?
Thank you very much, yes. I'd like to comment on 6A, and I, that was made by Mr. Nacastro. I believe if I understand it correctly, it's regarding the situation that we have with Council on Aging, and currently with waterfront projects, where the warrant articles failed at town meeting, but the ballot question passed. And so, a special town meeting can be called for a do-over. I think that that is a really bad precedent for us to set. I know that people were very disturbed when the Council on Aging kept coming back, and that happened, and it failed by a larger margin. I think it really diminishes the intent of having town meeting, and when the voters speak, they assume that, they should be able to assume, that that issue is not going to come back within 30, 60 days. A lot of people are going to be out on, away on September 16th after the summer, and it's also possible, because you can vote on a ballot question early or absentee, if you can't make it to town meeting. I think that some people, because they couldn't go to town meeting, would have probably changed their vote on the ballot question, had they listened to the discussion at town meeting. So I am in support of moving forward. I think it sort of adds insult to injury when we call a special town meeting with one warrant article, and it's going to cost the taxpayers $23,000 to carry it out, for something that they thought they had put to rest temporarily. And so that's my comment there. And I had some comments on the electric vehicle policy. I think you're going to be revisiting that again in the fall, after the Cape Cod Commission, because I do think that report on parking and this should be handled in concert. But two things that I noticed in it, if I read it correctly, is there's no procedure I saw in terms of implementation, and I was wondering if when you discuss it, you could just address whether or not, since EVs, charging stations can be put on any public, town-owned property, you know, we're talking all the beach parking lots, all the town, downtown parking lots, all the parks. And so I'm wondering, is that going to be made by staff, or will they have to come back to the select board to say, we want to put, you know, three charging stations at Oyster Pond, so that the public can weigh in on that? So hopefully, that would be the case. And just the second question is, in terms of enforcement, it said if, you know, if an EV or a non-EV is parked near a charging station blocking its use, there would be enforcement. But I just wondered if there's also enforcement, if somebody plugs in their car and then leaves for five hours, is there a way to know when it was plugged in and when it was charged? Because that would mean a lot of manpower in terms of going around marking tires. Because that would mean a lot of manpower in terms of going around, marking tires, saying, oh, this car's been here five or six hours. Because some people might just consider that the cost of, you know, staying in Chatham if they leave their cars. And it kind of defeats the purpose of the charging stations. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. I have been talking to a lot of people, and...
I'm sorry, I addressed you by name, but I think you need to identify yourself.
Ann Timson, Ann Timson, Chatham. I've talked to many, many people, and regardless of how they feel about what we're going to vote on at the special town meeting, they truly oppose the idea that this town, this board, not all of you, but some, are starting to create what I call a legal precedent. And there's nothing better than precedent when you're trying to change laws. And it's time this stopped. It's time that all the people who make a super effort to come to May town meetings, and they have traditionally for years and years and years, and it means eliminating all kinds of things on their schedule to be there. And they're there because of the kind of government that we're supposed to have in this town, where we elect you, and you respect our vote. And I don't think I need to say much more, except that everyone I've talked to endorses Dean's concept. And it's darn sad that it can't go on the special town meeting because it's an important issue. And thank you, Dean, for bringing it up. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Andy Baylor. I'm the owner of Bluefin's Sushi Downtown Main Street. This is in regards to the removal of the no-parking signs at 513 Main Street. I know it's not my property, but it does serve as a traffic prevention system by having three spaces that do prevent a lot of cars from blocking the main street if they're taking pickup, takeout, dropping off people for different things, et cetera, et cetera. The spaces that are there now, like I said, I am very happy they're there. If they're gone, they're gone. But I want you to think about this conversation of all the traffic problems. The traffic problem is, on Main Street, if you have, we average 40 cars a night coming in and picking up and taking out. So they pull in, they're there for five minutes, they take off, but that's 40 cars. They're going to have to park somewhere. And if it's not them who's pulling in, it's the resorts pulling in to drop people off. It's people coming in town to drop or pick up. So it serves as not creating a backup. And as you were saying, and hearing from people throughout town, everybody's parking farther and farther and farther into these other roads. Your decision is your decision. I'm fine with it. I just want you to know, I personally, myself, observing it, I see a better flow through downtown, because you know, when someone stops and blocks that road, that traffic continues to go to that rotary and farther past Cumberland Farms, and it just becomes a bottleneck. So you're not just saving, you know, three spaces for, say, three cars to park two or three times in a night. That's up to six to nine cars. You've got 40 cars parking at that period of time. So it's just a thought on traffic. And I know maybe there's some pressure that they, that shouldn't be there, it's really not fair. That's up to you completely. I'll abide with whatever you want. I'm just feeling that. It's been successful. I know it started during COVID, but it's been a successful method to keep Main Street open. And any questions you have, I'm happy to answer.
Well, I actually do have a question. And I know what you're talking about. You haven't exaggerated the situation at all. It's, that's a correct assessment of what, what goes on there. My question is, could you not do that carryout process in the back, in the parking lot?
That parking lot is a really difficult place to do. We don't really know how we would, we would get that accomplished, only because of the narrow aspect of going through Kent Place and back through the Squire and back out behind the bookstore. In order to accomplish that, you're going to have three cars sticking out, and I just don't know if you're going to have, I just don't know if you can do it. We can do, we can try anything.
Well, I'm not suggesting it, I'm just asking, as opposed to the bottleneck on Main Street, having three or four cars lined up there behind your facility and the others that are adjacent to you.
Right.
I don't know whether that makes any sense or not. I'm just asking the question.
Sure. You can, you can move the traffic to another place. It's, it's correct.
If it's five minutes or whatever is...
You're just creating another, it's, but it will create more traffic in the back versus the front. The front, it's in and out. In the back, it's, you have to be able to pull back out, people have to get through. But it just depends on how people park. And it's, it's very narrow, and it's, I mean, I'm directing traffic in the back all night long. I have to come out, I have to have people move cars. You can't be there, people can't come through. We have to set cones up on my staff parking, because they're always getting hit by bigger vehicles, because there's very little room between the sign shop, when people park there, the ice cream store, and our place. So it's just a, that's a, I mean, I don't know, you know how busy it is. But again...
I do, I do.
That's completely up to you guys.
Yeah, okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I totally get it. I get what you're saying, Andy. Have you ever thought of a delivery service, you're getting that many takeout, that much takeout demand? Any kind of DoorDash thing, you know, you order, we deliver? I mean, you know, it's got to be a fairly lucrative part of your business.
I'm going to give you my stocky answer to that.
Go ahead.
Who wants to buy high-quality sushi that's been thrown in a DoorDash vehicle delivered down who knows where?
Well, I'm thinking it's more local than not. I don't, folks from Highway or Truro are coming here.
For me, I just, I can't see it, we can't see how it's going to get there with the quality. That's why we never did that delivery service. Would we do a delivery service?
Yeah, yeah, I'm asking that.
We don't even have enough manpower sometimes to operate, so that's the hard part.
Well, it certainly gets the traffic away from downtown, that's for sure.
Right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comments?
Brian Phillips, 374 Leans Road. I just think we should do things to support our local merchants and not really care about the six people from New Jersey that can't park here in the summertime.
Boy, I'll tell you, New Jersey's having a hard time tonight, you know? Anything else? Okay. Moving to the business agenda. Dean, do you want to start?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for putting this on tonight's agenda, and my thanks to Ms. Gibbs and Ms. Timson for their comments. I'm going to try to make this quick, but I am going to read a memo that I included in the packet. I wanted to say upfront, this proposal was not, is not directed at the currently scheduled special town meeting on the 16th, but it was inspired by the call for that special town meeting and the call for the special town meeting for 1610 Main Street, which I did support. I didn't support the most recent one, and I support the article as is clear in the warrant. My goal here is to discourage calls for special town meetings that are based on an election ballot question result that differs from the town meeting result that preceded that on the associated article. I recognize that it's a legal mechanism or device, and I was not surprised when Town Council advised us regarding 1610 Main Street that it was legally permissible. And I remember conversations with the town manager, because we had recollections that Town Council had advised us of that previously, although when I searched the warrants, I couldn't find an example of it previously. I'm not proposing a prohibition, I'm just proposing aspirational future conduct, and my recommendation is not to ask for a vote in support of it tonight, but to simply refer the draft language that I proposed to the Finance Committee and the town's financial advisors for comment back. And my understanding and conversation with Jill is that the financial advisors plan to, if this is referred to them, plan to consult with bond counsel. So I'm going to read the memo, because I'm not sure that everyone in the public has seen it. It's, it's not that long. "My purpose in proposing this amendment is to lay out a formal marker in the town's financial guidelines that would serve to discourage town officials from using a prior ballot approval to support a Proposition 2 1/2 exclusion after the associated borrowing request failed at town meeting. I would submit that such use, while legally permissible, should not become a routine practice in Chatham, for which the sequential model has traditionally been town meeting approval first, followed by approval at a town election. I believe that deviating from the traditional sequence can serve to undermine public confidence in the fiscal responsibility of town governance, and should be avoided more often than not. The proposal is modest, it is not a prohibition, as I do not wish to tie the hands of those entrusted with oversight over the town's finances. It is merely philosophically aspirational and hortitarian nature. It also expressly calls for exceptions in cases of fiscal exigency, for example, to finance an emergent or urgent town project, or when the practice is needed for housekeeping purposes, for example, to remedy an oversight in a borrowing article that was actually approved at a previous town meeting. It should be acknowledged that town officials have utilized the reverse sequence only twice over the past decade, resulting recently in the call of a special town meeting on two separate occasions within approximately one year's time. Given this recent history, I submit that the practice in question should not be accepted as a routine financial process going forward. Finally, I'm not requesting that the proposal be adopted tonight, I'm simply requesting that it be referred to the Finance Committee and the town's financial advisors for review and recommendation back to the Select Board. The Select Board could subsequently exercise its judgment on the wisdom of this issue." So that's it. I will offer a motion at some point, I guess, depending on the conversation tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I, just casting myself as a traffic cop here for a moment, I think we have three options here. Basically, one is to accept Dean's recommendation, which is refer at least the concept to the Finance Committee and ask them for their input before we make a decision. The financial policies are the purview of the Select Board, so at some point, we have to decide whether to do anything about this. Or we could say, I guess we could adopt it without more this evening, or we could reject it without more. Just in terms of efficiency of meeting, I guess I would, I would focus on the notion that it, that whatever we decide we want to do, or whatever we might think we want to do, I personally would like to have the input of the Finance Committee before I decide what I want to do, and I'll leave it at that. Jeff?
Thanks, Mr. Shell, yeah. And I agree, I would, I agree with Dean's recommendation to throw this to the Finance Committee and get their, get their readout on it. So I would support that, I would support that motion. I, you know, it's fortunate and unfortunate in a couple of different ways that we have two of these so close together. I think they were very unique circumstances where we voted to have a special town meeting after the, after the ballot vote was in favor of, of the, of the actions that town meeting did not favor. I think it's, I think they're very unique, and I'm certainly reluctant to have them become routinized in any way, shape, or form, nor, you know, are we looking to subvert or supplant the vote of town meeting and the wishes of town meeting. This is a very unique circumstance, I believe, for this special town meeting coming up on the 16th. It was not the, the brainchild of this Select Board. It was frankly brought to us by our waterways committees with, I think, very, very strong argument. So I think this is a very unique circumstance. I understand the concern, but you've got a Select Board that gets it, and I think it's a good idea to remand it to the, ask the Finance Committee for their, for their input. And understand that in no way, shape, or form, would I favor it becoming routinized in any way, shape, or form. But there are very unique circumstances that I would not want a prohibition. I would not want a prohibition, because you don't know. So anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
I agree with Jeff, but I think more importantly is to hear from the bond and financial advisors as to the impact on our triple bond rating, as far as that's concerned. So I'm, I'm happy to, I'm curious to see what the Finance Committee says as well.
Good. Yeah, Corey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I mean, the ask tonight from Select Board member Nacastro is to refer back to the Finance Committee and the, our town's financial advisors, and I fully support that philosophically. I'd almost be at the point of recommending its approval, because I think philosophically, we, we have a lot of discussion that we're going to have moving forward. But I won't get too deep into the weeds on those right now, so I will support or even move to refer this back to the Finance Committee and the town's financial advisors for their review and our recommendation back to the Select Board if that motion is accepted.
Yeah, I'm, I will vote for that motion. I'd just like to point out that I think there are a number of things here in play, not least of which is the fact that we have, in some sense, two different electorates. There's the town meeting electorate, but there are the people who can't get to town meeting, for whatever reason. And I don't know about anybody else, but I hear from a lot of people who are frustrated because they can't express their will at town meeting by way of absentee ballot or mail-in ballot or whatever. That's the state law, and there's nothing you can do about that. But when you have a, an initiative like either of these two that are, I think notionally, at least some of the motivat, motivat, motivation for this, this proposal, it's well to acknowledge that, you know, the voters at the town election expressed a point of view on a policy matter that we're not, I don't believe, entitled to completely ignore, any more than we're entitled to ignore, as some people are suggesting we are, doing the vote at the, at the town meeting. I would point out that, that, you know, the, in the case of the COA, one vote was the difference between passage and failure. And the votes at the town elections have been substantially in excess of the majority needed. And I think that those are factors that are worth taking into account. I also think that Dean's, by the way, hortitarian, what does that mean? I'm only, I'm teasing, but I think that working on the conditions that are worthy of the criteria that ought to be kept in mind in deciding whether to go back and have a special town meeting is something that's worthy of discussion as well, but certainly something that is an emergency or a matter of urgency, whatever that might consist of, and/or housekeeping, I think those are worthy starts on the matter. So with that, I, I'm happy to vote for Corey's motion.
I'll second Corey's motion. And just, just for the record, what will be referred to the Finance Committee as the language that I proposed?
That's fine.
And I'll read it as one sentence. "We're adding a sub-paragraph 4A to the financial, the town of Chatham budget and financial management policies," which will read as follows, "proposition 2 1/2 debt exclusion, the town will strive to limit to circumstances of financial exigency or housekeeping purposes, the exclusion of debt under Proposition 2 1/2 Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 59, Section 21(c), and reliance on a ballot question approval that occurs at an election that precedes town meeting action to authorize proposed borrowing, notwithstanding any legal authority to make such reliance." That's the motion.
Okay. All those in favor, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Castro.
Aye, and thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Hortatory. It's an adjective, exhorting, encouraging, urging to some course of conduct or action, exhorting, encouraging, a hortatory speech. Well done.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Yes, indeed. Okay. The no parking signs in front of 513 Main Street. Ms. Craig, are you still here?
I want to make it very clear, I am not speaking for the Traffic Safety Committee, and I want to thank Kathy Lewis for the background information that she so diligently looked into and sent to all of us. I think you have it in your packet also. This dates back to COVID when there was a lot of pickup downtown and a group got together, it's my understanding, to pick four or five different areas where you could have pickup, and it was striped accordingly. And after Prop Two and a Half, a number of those were decreased, and now there is only the one that is in front of Bluefin. And it is, as was mentioned by a previous speaker, taking up three really good spaces from a downtown that has limited space. And my point is, there are other areas in town that also do hefty pickup. They do find, we do find areas to park or to even sometimes, pardon me, but double park and send in the grandchild to get the pizza or to get Bluefin or whatever it might be. So there is this priority, this precedent that has been set. It was my understanding that this was going to be repainted and become three spaces again, and that is not the case. I know there might be the possibility that you might consider sending it to the Traffic Safety Committee, back to us. It's not come to us yet. This is me because I spoke to some of you that I have received complaints, not only from some of the businesses, but also from some of the community people. And if you make the decision not to take action on this, to refer it, my thought is refer it to the parking study committee, a group, sorry, we're not a committee, because we will be looking at what the Cape Cod Commission has to say, and perhaps from that information, we may want to take a look at all the parking in downtown. Thank you. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Corey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This one's a tough one because, I mean, I get it, first and foremost, equity to all the merchants and shops and businesses downtown is critical. Completely, completely agree with that philosophy. So taking that aside, this area is not exactly no parking. It's no parking Tuesday through Sunday from 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Three to 9:00 p.m. That's correct.
So there are a couple of other options we definitely have on the table. We could change the requirements. It could be 5:00 p.m. I'm just throwing this out there for thought process. The owner of the establishment in front of it, these Bluefins, mentioned about 40-odd takeout areas. So you do have to factor in where are those cars going to go. That particular area of town, alley between bookstore, alley between the squire, maybe over by the, you know, Mayflower, it gets a little bit tricky. So there's no ideal pickup places. I'm sure all the places, all the food establishments on downtown Chatham would love to have a little drop-off area. So my question is, is there a safety need, a functional need, a community need to have a drop-off area in that side of town there or somewhere else? So then you go back to the question, does the Traffic Safety look at it? Does the Parking Solutions Group look at it? I'm a little reluctant to get rid of it because I do think it does serve a purpose in the area. You can argue you could move it somewhere else. I'm indifferent about that, but I do think it does actually serve a little bit of a safety, public service, and, but I would, I personally think I would roll back the hours a little bit because if you roll it back to like 5:00 to 9:00, you're only talking about a four-hour window, which would be a test. Maybe try that for a year and then come back and revisit it. We're trying to balance everything. It's a no-win situation, no matter what we do, but I would like to try to see if we can wiggle a little bit and see if we can find a direction that may be the benefit of everybody. But I think, I think at the very least, rolling back the hours might make a little more sense because the three to five, I think, is more mementable to the live traffic that people are shopping and doing things. If you give them two extra hours per day, would be a consideration. So those are my initial thoughts.
Shereen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, you know, this all started in COVID. We had pickup and drop-off locations, as Ms. Craig had said. We did, last year or two years ago, decide to limit just that one area to three to nine. Mr. Baylor made a good argument about traffic flow and the number of cars that are serviced for that, but he's not the only business that should or could utilize that. He happens to be near that. I would prefer that we, we have a comprehensive plan happening now through the commission, through the Parking Solutions Working Group for downtown and surrounding areas. I, I'm sort of ambiguous whether to say yes or no at this point. That's why I think it would probably be better to just look at it from, see what a referral would be from the Parking Working Group. And then, Dean, you serve on that, so maybe you have a little more insight into that, and maybe you're already looking at that. But I think that, you know, we may, had a great presentation from the commission. We assumed we knew what we were talking about and what our needs were for parking in Chatham, and I was quite enlightened by what we actually do need to be doing, so I want to continue that conversation. So at this point, it's either what, you know, Corey had said about five to nine, or just leave it for now until we get a recommendation from those that know.
Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, I remember the Parking Solutions Working Group as well, and have been for a while, and appreciate Jones' participation and Dean's participation. I'm a little ambivalent about this one. It came into, it came into being during COVID and understood why, but I feel as though it's not equitable to the rest of the merchants. So I'm willing to have it remanded back to the working group, but there's an issue of equity here for me, to be honest with you. And I understand Andy's argument about, about traffic and traffic flow, whether Orpheum has the same type of deal, you pick up at the Orpheum, you go around the corner, you run in, you double park. I get it, but if we're going to do it there, then we should have it for everybody, a pickup area in downtown, and how we pull that off, I have no clue. So I'm willing to vote to remand it to the Parking Solutions Working Group, but don't quite know what that solution's going to be or not at this case, at this point. You did get the summer out of it, and, you know, that's, that's good, but I have an issue of equity, to be honest with you. Thanks.
Dean?
Thank you. I am on the Parking Solutions Working Group, and my recollection is that this all started with the Parking Solutions Working Group. I remember walking that, in the middle of COVID, with Chief Paulina and Katie, and so we put the recommendations forward, and there were three, three areas in town, including across the street where the jeweler is, and then those were pulled back by the select board. But I think it makes sense to have this referred to that body because they are looking at the Cape Cod Commission draft final, is it a final report? You are scheduling a meeting later this month.
Sure. Thank you. If I could.
Yeah, so I would support a referral back to that committee. And I should point out, and I think Mr. Baylor makes some very good comments that are not necessarily self-serving in terms of traffic flow, and those should be taken into account. And the Chamber of Commerce Merchants Association is represented on that group, so presumably they would inform their members who are, whose participation is very welcome before that particular body, if and when this comes before them. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Katie.
Thank you. Katie Donovan, Director of Community Development. I just wanted to clarify that the initial group was called, during COVID, was called the Downtown Main Street Working Group, and it was to determine not only parking, but what other types of precautions to take during COVID. So I just wanted that to be clarified. We are planning to schedule a meeting for a discussion with the Cape Cod Commission in the middle of October. They'll have some initial feedback for us before they come back with their final plan. But I do know that, or if I recall, they did address those spaces at a point in time, and so I think that they may come back with a recommendation. That may be the way to go, is to wait and hear what they have to say about those spaces and then bring it back to the board for more discussion.
So I'm not, I'm only going to swim upstream a little bit here. I'm fine with a referral and waiting to hear what they have to say in October, but in my mind, with a very clear determination that, depending on what they have to say, that we revisit this, whatever that recommend, unless the recommendation is that it go away. I'm concerned about the equity point. It's clear to me that both the hours and the days are key to accommodating the business in question. There are at least two other businesses on Main Street that I can, and one of them you mentioned, which is the Orpheum. You know, the cookwork shop, you know, you could, you could have the same thing out in front there so somebody can run in and pick up their sandwich or whatever that they've ordered. And I, so I think from an equity point of view, it's time for us to deal with this. We don't have to do it tonight, but I do, I do think that we should look to see what we hear from in October and, depending on what that is, take this back up again. So I would take a motion, a referral motion.
It was my understanding that someone, a business owner, was not able to be here but wanted to speak on it. Is that correct? No, from Jay McLaughlin?
I'm here online, but I'm speaking about Agenda D, the outdoor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, goods?
Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
It's okay. So.
So I would move to defer action and refer this subject to the Parking Solutions Working Group and not take any action this evening.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dyken?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next case.
Mr. Shell, sorry to interrupt, but I am told that there's no picture at home on the channel, so I just, I don't know whether we have to stop or anything, but I just, I was told that my wife said there's no picture.
Mark, do you have any input on that? Are we, we're functional, as far as you can tell?
We can see you from home.
Okay. All right, cool. Thank you.
Okay.
What about on our Chatham TV channel itself?
Yeah.
Looks like it's broadcasting.
Okay, thanks. I don't mean to interrupt, I just, I got feedback. Thanks.
Okay, next case is the memorial bench donation at the Old Mill Boatyard. Greg, please.
Greg Berman, Director of Natural Resources, taking over for Takeon for this one. Our newly constructed step access over at Old Mill Boatyard, he discovered that installing a bench would probably be helpful for people, oh, perfect, putting on and off boots and otherwise just being able to use those steps. A bench was actually ordered and was ready on hand while we were contacted by Scott and Jessica Pollak, who were looking to donate a bench to the town. So this seemed like a perfect opportunity. We have a bench, it's ready to be installed, they would like to donate the bench if the select board is willing to do so. I don't know if Jessica Pollak might be online. I know she's traveling and was going to try to, but may not have been able to.
Ms. Pollak, are you online by chance? Apparently not.
Mr. Shell?
Yeah, Ms. Davis?
I'm just going to make a motion.
Yep, please do.
I move that the select board approve the donation of, for reimbursing costs for the bench installation at Old Mill Boatyard parking lot as described in honor of Walter Pollak, and the bench will read in memory of Walter Pollak, beloved husband, father, and friend, gone fishing.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, and thanks to the Pollaks in absentia. Next, consider outdoor display of goods and sales at 632 Main Street, Chatham, on September 19 and 2024. Jen Burkhart is, I believe, online with Jay McLaughlin. Jen, before you start.
Hi.
I just want to declare that I have a, my sister-in-law is an employee of Jay McLaughlin in Chicago. I don't believe that's a conflict, but I just wanted to get that out on the table. Please.
I appreciate that. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board, for hearing and considering us. We are looking to put three garment racks on our lawn, set back five feet from our property line, approved from our landlord, Mike Shaw, to do our annual warehouse sale. We've been on Main Street for 15 years. We've done this sale the last six years, and it's the first time we've had to go in front of the board for approval.
Questions, Corey?
No. First of all, I want to thank you very much for actually following the process because that's a discussion up and down Main Street about, you know, outdoor sales of goods, what's the requirement, what are you supposed to do, what are you not supposed to do? If you do it and no one complains, you're fine. If you do it and someone complains, you, we have an obligation to enforce it. So that opens up a whole new discussion. So I'm going to keep it very simple. I appreciate you moving forward. I think if the landlord says fine, it's five feet off the, off the street, and we can keep it controlled, I will support this proposal. Because the new thing we need is support downtown merchants and small shop owners, and they could have just gone ahead and done it, and I would not have liked it, but that's what some people do. This is the reality of the situation, so I'm going to support the small business.
Got a motion?
There's a motion.
I'll take a motion unless there's any other comments.
That's a motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dyken?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye. Thank you very much, Ms. Burkhart.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Next case, considering acceptance of a tree donation at Veterans Field, is Mr. West online?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you for having me. I'm Steve West. I'm the president of the Chatham Athletic Association, and if you look at your packets, beginning on page 98, kind of gives some background on our, on our opportunity. What we're doing is we're seeking the select board approval to plant six of green giant great western arborvidy trees that are 10 to 12 feet tall on the hill behind the centerfield fence at Veterans Field. Once we get the trees planted, hopefully this fall, which is about a $6,000 to $10,000 gift to the town, we would like to make. Trees are going to provide a nice backdrop, backdrop for our hitters at Veterans Field. Currently, they're looking out at a white building, and it's also going to provide an improved aesthetics and shade for the end of the Rail Colony Bike Trail. I've worked with Rob Failey. I want to thank him very much for the diagram that he's presented, that you may or may not have in front of you there. We've reviewed with Friends of Trees and gotten their endorsements back in, in early August, reviewed with the Bike Ways Committee at the end of August and got their endorsement. All of that documentation is in your packet, and as I said, the diagram of the planting location and a photo of the trees to be planted are also included in there. So the bottom line is, we're seeking your final approval for us to move forward to plant these trees.
Thank you, Mr. West. Shereen?
Yeah, I, I'm seeing the diagram, and I'm wondering if this is area where people pull off and they park and watch the game, or they sit and enjoy the games, and whether this would be impeding that sort of enjoyment along that road.
Shereen, you know, we need to raise a lot. Sure. Shereen, you know, we, we need to raise a lot of money. So that was one of the first things that I, I, I checked all summer, quite frankly, and there, there probably would be a few on the top of the hill that would have to move forward somewhat. But in all, it's, it's, it was, it was very minimal impact of, of, of actual people that are up there. And there's plenty of room on the hill, even at the most crowded of the games, for, for them to move a little bit forward.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Yeah, I had the same. Steve, this is Jeff Dykens. I had the same, same question about seating. Looks as though it's pretty close to where folks do plant their chairs or sit on the hill, so I had some concern there. And I'd like to know, is the, is the genesis of this really to have a better backdrop for the hitters, a green backdrop rather than a, a white one, for a right-handed hitter, it looks like, even a left-handed hitter as well, but, or is it really to commemorate or put a stake in the ground to the beginning and the ending of the, of the, of the bike trail, or, or is it both?
It, well, from our perspective, it's, it's, and I don't know if you can see, you can't see it, because I, they won't let me show the, they won't let me be on your, your video screen, but, but it is, from our perspective, we are doing it for the purpose of both right-handed and left-handed batters.
Okay.
And, and that's the way it's, you know, we've measured it off very, very precisely for that impact. But it also does kind of, the BikeWays Committee, as, as Rob Failey may or may not have mentioned to you guys at some other meetings, is, is trying to spruce up, using a tree term, the, the end of the bike trail and make it more convenient. And I, you know, I envision possibly adding additional trees at some point later, or you could put benches in front of the trees. There's a lot of things you can do around those trees. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Anybody, Corey?
No, I think the concept of planting, you know, really substantial-sized trees are more beneficial than not. So, I mean, I don't have an issue with it.
Trees are good. Trees are good. Me too. I'll take a motion.
So moved. Accept, we accept the donation of?
Second.
Uh, all the. No, I, I want to comment.
Oh, please.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm just questioning the placement. I, I understand that this is beneficial, and getting the understanding, and it's benefiting the, the batters and, and whatnot. I'm just, I, I'm just not, you know, I don't know, I just don't feel like it fits right, or it's comfortable to me. And, but that's a matter of aesthetics, so I'm not going to vote against it. I just wanted to make the statement that I think you're going to find people be very surprised to see those trees there once they're planted. And I'm not against trees, just, it's just the sighting of them that, that doesn't make sense to me, other than the.
Well, let me ask, just to give Shereen's concern, it's due, Mr. West, when you say "move forward," are you saying that people will be able to watch the game if they sit immediately in front of the trees?
Yeah. Oh, yes, absolutely.
Oh, okay, okay. Uh, yeah, I, I, I mean, that helps me. Uh, they won't be able, probably, they won't, they won't be able.
Yeah, 10 or 15 feet of flat space in front of where the trees are going to be. It's, it's not, it's, there, there's still a lot of room on top of the hill for people to sit. And like I said, when I, I, I walked around there during the games all summer, and we had, we had it marked off for, for a lot, a lot of the latter part of the summer. And literally, you know, we, we averaged over 2,000 fans at our game, and it might have impacted, at the most, maybe 10 fans on any given night.
Did you want to say something, Rob?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. So that, you know, Steve West is, is correct. There is a very large area, a, a flat area up there, on both sides of the trees. The way they're positioned, and it really doesn't show it very well in the aerial image, it's, it's really all way off to the side. The BikeWays Committee has some plans. We recently installed a bench at the end of the trail. We have some tentative plans about installing additional benches and making more of a focused seating area there. But it really, it's, it's only going to impact a very small number of people.
Dean?
Well, I was going to ask, how close is this to the street, to Depot Road? And is, given what you just said, are you keeping it a little bit farther inland from the road because, so that you can put these other amenities there? Is that what you're talking about?
So there's like a paved area at the end of the bike trail?
Yeah.
Uh, so that would, it would, that would be the focus area of the, kind of the end of the bike path, sitting area.
Okay.
Kind of a focus, possibly a pavilion and a number of benches at, at some point.
I know that these trees can get pretty wide, like 40 feet or so. But if you just look at this overhead that we had on the screen a moment ago, it is placed a little, it's placed almost in the center, or close to the center of that area behind the field. Does, does it have to be that far inward from the street, or?
Well, as they mature, we didn't want them to interfere with the utility lines or the street or anything of that nature. So we wanted it to be planted and then not have to touch them again, and just let them grow naturally.
And that brownish area, is that just, is, that's not a, is that a depression? That's where they're sitting?
That's where we're sitting.
That's where they're sitting?
That's the side of the hill going down the bank.
Okay. And, and these trees will shade that area where, when people are, where people are sitting? Which is not true. Not nice. It depends.
I do have a more question. We, we, we used to pull in there and park in our trucks. Isn't there a parking area up there, on that side of the?
There is not a parking area up there. We, we did away, the town did away with that many years ago. That was a.
Oh, stop, really?
That's Islam.
Yeah, because, because of the headlights.
Gotcha. That wouldn't, they'd hurt the batters. Thanks.
All right. I think we have a motion on the table, and do we have a second? Okay. All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis?
Abstain.
Uh, Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
And Mr. Matters?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. West. Next case.
Thank you very much.
We have acceptance of a donation of $50,000 to the protective, Protection Bylaw Revolving Fund, Tree Protection Bylaw Revolving Fund. Mr., oh, Mr. Berman? You're having a busy night tonight?
I do, I do. So I'm actually a little sorry that our conservation agent, Paul Whitman, wasn't able to join us this evening. But it's rare you get such positive feedback as a donation of $50,000. So we're very pleased with the work that he did, and apparently this homeowner is also very pleased with the work that he did. So I, I do just want to read one sentence of an email that we got just today. "We have great admiration for what you and your colleagues do to undertake the mission of conservation in our town. We prefer to have this donation made anonymously, anonymously, so as not to take away from the focus of town efforts." So this would be to the Tree Protection Bylaw Revolving Fund, which I believe right now currently does not have funds in it, so this would be some good seed money, if you will.
Comments, please?
Yeah, this is great. I'm curious as to what kind of responsible, responsive service that, that Paul did to warrant such a, a, a nice act. But I don't want you to have to divulge anything.
Nothing untoward.
No, no, I don't mean it that way. I just mean, like, any, any conversation might divulge the, the donor, so I won't say that. But I will say publicly, thank you, and I hope you'll be able to express that thanks if we do approve this, which I'm going to make a motion if that's.
Yep.
I, I recommend that the select board approve the donation of $50,000 to be deposited to the Tree Protection Bylaw Revolving Fund, and a thank you sent to the, if possible, to the donors.
And I would second that with acknowledgement to Mr. Whitman as well.
Of course, yes.
A great job, obviously. Great job. Thank you.
Amen. All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
And Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Thanks. And, and please do convey warm appreciation to all in concern, Paul, and the, the donor, to the extent that you can.
Thank you, will do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Speaking of thank yous, did we ever send a formal thank you letter to the anonymous donor for the Eldridge Garage gas station building? Or are we waiting for the charging stations?
I'm pretty sure we did, but I'll definitely look into that.
Yeah, I thought we did too, but. Okay. Next is the donation of road plates over the tide gate on Morris Island Causeway. There has been a furious exchange of agreements and advice, and everything is, is Mr. Tallerman on the, on, online here? Jay, are you here with us? Apparently not. Okay. Jill, can you give us a little bit of a, at least a running start here on?
Sure.
Exactly what we're, what we're dealing with here?
So this project relates to road plates that was put down to protect our roadway. And with that, the owner had to, had offered to donate them. In the packet, it was a little different than our normal protocol, where he had put it in as a $1 fee to the town to purchase. After further conversations, and certainly Greg can jump in on this, he had agreed to have a strict donation to the town. And so there's a couple of reiterations. Definitely the one in your packet is the one that has been revised, I think as recent as 3:33 today PM, with review by Town Council, as well as the property owner's attorney. Greg, I can turn it over to you, since you were involved in it, if there's anything else to add.
Sure. I mean, with, with regard to Town Council, and not speaking for Town Council, but his last email did say that he was okay with this last draft, that it would, you know, be acceptable for the town. There were a lot of permutations. The first one was moving from a sales agreement to a donation, and then just some, in my mind, relatively small wordsmithing back and forth between the lawyers. But I think we got there at the very end here. The idea behind these road plates, where they were put down due to very heavy and multiple trucks traveling across this area for the work at 97 Tulippee, we were concerned about the roadway before this work occurred. We would be concerned afterwards. So the property owner, as part of the mitigation, is willing to gift these plates to the town. Speaking with, Rob's already left. Don't want to speak for him, but after conversations with DPW, he did say that they were installed properly, and it would be, you know, favorable for the town to acquire these plates. Honestly, we would probably leave them there until we address this area in a more substantial way. We have some studies, some grant opportunities with the Coast of Brazilians to look at this section, to see how we might, you know, tweak it in the future. But it definitely needs to be addressed just as a road, if not for the title restriction it involves. So this is part of the mitigation for 97 Tulippee. And then I had made a very brief reference earlier to the $10,000 used for removing trees from deeper water. So both of these are donation mitigation efforts that, again, our Conservation Commissioner, Paul Whitman, have been involved with. This particular one is a donation, and I think we may need to set up a special fund for the $10,000, and that will probably be coming at a later meeting for you to, you know, approve if you so see fit.
Thank you. So I, I'm informed now that Town Council, Jay Tylerman, is on. Jay, do you want to comment on your, the scope of your recommendation, please? And welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. So we, I don't have a, a strong opinion on what to do here. I think that's a policy question. I do find the, how the plates arrived on a town-owned way to be somewhat curious. But if the issue is whether or not to accept them via donation, and originally it was proposed as a nominal sale, and I suggested it should be a donation, then the owner of them, or the installer of them, has requested an agreement that would essentially be tantamount to a release, where they'd be willing to give them to us, but as would be typical, they'd be asked to be absolved of any liability relating to their fitness, or their use, or what, whatever else may arise from our continued use of them.
Jeff, you were going to say something?
No, I just, is this acceptable to the, you know, our highway department, DPW, et cetera? Is this adequate? Obviously, it looks as though it's working. So why wouldn't we accept that donation? There, there, there's no reason, is there, unless you tell us there is?
Right. So Rob, our DPW director and I have talked about this. Before the offer was made, we each agreed that it would be good if they could stay there. So that was part of the conversation we had with the applicant.
So I'm just going to jump in, having, and Dean probably is right behind me, at reading paragraph three. In terms of release of liability, it goes beyond just the fitness of these plates for the purpose that they're, they're, they're installed. Pretty much, we're, we're accepting that whatever claims we might, as I read it, correct me if I'm wrong, Jay, that we're, we're accepting that, once we, once we sign and accept these, these plates, we don't have any further claims against the, the homeowner with respect to anything, including damages to the road or anything else, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, I think, and I, I could call up the agreement, but I think it says arising out of the agreement, which is the donation of the plates. So I, I don't, I don't read that provision, and I'm happy to tighten it up. But I don't read that provision as, hey, you can do anything you want with respect to the road. I review, I read it as being a release only with respect to the conveyance or the donation regarding the plates, not the roadway, not the tide gate, not the shoulders, not anything else.
Yeah, I, I, and you're the lawyer here. I, but I, I was looking at the first sentence, which flatly says, here, "The town hereby agrees to release and hold the donor harmless, which may imply indemnification from any and all claim suits, damages, and liability of any kind, period."
Yeah, I mean, I could, I think the context is that it's with respect to the, the plates, but I could certainly repeat the language that I think is in the.
Yeah, the next sentence does say what you're saying, arising out of or relating to this agreement, or the transaction contemplated. And, and maybe you just put those together.
Yeah, we just tether, tether them together to a semicolon, or what have you.
Okay, then I'm fine.
Yeah.
I'm fine then. Dean?
Yeah, I was going to bring up that same point. Appreciate you bringing it up, Mike. Just the concept of the, of a release and a hold harmless clause. Is this something that you find, Jay, to be common in, in a donation agreement like this? I mean, it just seems a bit much to me.
I think it's a good, it's a good question. So it's something I would find common with respect to an agreement where someone is conveying goods, where they want to be then released from that liability. In a donation, we don't often see it that way. We normally just see, "I hereby donate," and so it's just a gift. Here, I think it's somewhat reasonable, if I was the owner of the plates, the town expressed an interest, and they've been sitting out there for a while, sure, I'll give them to you. But if, if they collapse, if they break, if they, you know, are not, if they don't support the roadway, I, I understand and appreciate, believe me, I'm not one to easily give in and suggest that a town offer a release when one isn't advisable. But here, I think it's a reasonable request by the property owner that, look, I'm giving you these plates, and then I'm washing my hands of them, so to speak, I think is their position, and I don't want to hear about it again. I, I'm breaking it down into the vernacular. But that's kind of their position, and frankly, it's not unreasonable for them to take that position, because I think we could all conceive of situations whereby something that's in the road performing a function that vehicles may go over, or there, there may be use of, could result in liability. So I think the more curious thing is, if we didn't accept the donation, what happens then? Because they're installed in the road. Because they're installed in the road. It's not like they can just pick them up and, and do something with them. There's also a wetland nearby, so the circumstances are somewhat curious here. If the town sees a benefit in owning and maintaining the plates, great. If the town doesn't, and leaves them the way they are, then they're probably just going to stay the way they are.
The second sentence was added subsequent to the earlier draft. It's very expansive in terms of non-liability for consequential and special damages, but it seems, whoever their attorney is, was very, was trying to think of every conceivable possibility here, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't really, I, I let it go because it doesn't mean anything. If we're releasing them, we're releasing them from, and it's really just, not from, we're not releasing, we're not indemnifying them, we're not paying any damages, so if a third party sues them, we're not responsible for that. We're just releasing them from our, on our own. So, that would only mean, if we're releasing them, we're not suing them. So, the notion that there's any damages that cause is essentially surplusage, in, in my view. So, if they felt it looked good, great, but it doesn't really have any legal effect because we're not going to be suing them.
Greg, these plates, they, they cost $20,000?
That was the estimate given by the engineer.
That include installation?
That would, yes.
Was the town present when they were installed?
So, this is the backstory of how the plates got here. So, this was an emergency certification by the Conservation Commission. We had been in touch internally with the town because the applicant was driving many, many trucks that are very heavy over this area. We already knew that this road had some issues to begin with. We were concerned about the trucks, and specifically requested they do something to shore that up. DPW went out and looked at the plates and the installation very shortly thereafter. And again, I hesitate to speak for Rob, but he did say they did a good job. This is a contractor that the town has used in the past, and he was comfortable with the work.
And this is the same, this is my last question. This is the same party that donated the $10,000 of trees?
Yes, the $10,000, which will be coming, we just have to have the select board do a, which Jay told us about before, there's a special fund that we'll be setting up to, you know, get that in the right place to be able to do that work.
And that, but that was a condition of, of the Conservation Commission, that they had to come up with those trees?
Yes, so thi- this is actually part of that mitigation also.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Jay.
If I may, I, Corey, I just want a quick question. Is the work done? There are no more trucks driving over the road?
Oh, no, there, there are trucks still driving over the road, so this is the second phase of the work. They had to pause the work over the summer. We had it scheduled for that, just it would have been too disruptive. So, they're going to finish the work, I believe, around October. And then, in addition to this property, there's other properties coming forward that are seeing erosion, that may have not the same level of work, but, you know, slightly less, but there's still going to be a lot of activity on this road, which is another reason why, you know, it, it made sense in air mines for the town to maintain these plates instead of having to go back and forth and install and reinstall these constantly.
I'm going to have a follow-up, but go ahead.
Just, just for clarity, so, this project, there was no scenario like a performance bond or anything that would protect the, the access road? Nothing like that was in place?
I'd have to look at the order.
I mean, because if there's a performance bond, then we have something that we can fall back on to, you know, put the road back in, in its initial state. I guess the question is, is the roadway before the plates went down, what is the comparison of the, of the roadway from when the plates went down to where it is now? Did, even with the plates, did the road experience significant deterioration, damage, wear and tear because of the activities? And if we were to say we were not to accept the donation, I'm just trying to run up the mechanics of this, would the property owner be required to remove the plates and to make any improvements to the road via their, the project they're, they're pursuing, or working on?
Right, so, thinking more on it, we did ask for and receive proof of a bond. I don't have those details specifically on me, but there was evidence of that. The condition of the road, we did not have a full assessment of it beforehand, but DPW and Coast to Resource Director had gone out, and the road was in disrepair. It was only photographed and visually inspected, but there were sinkholes around the area, there was settling, there was issues underneath, some weeping of material. So, at this point, it starts to get difficult to say how much damage might have been caused by trucks versus what was already done. And parsing it out, you know, this is an area that, that does need to be addressed by the town, we're having a study to see how that tiegate might need to get re-adjusted. But it's not simply because it's not effective as a tiegate, it's also a section of road and bridge that really needs to be addressed, even before this work.
All right, thank you.
So, so I, the question that I, is in my mind here, is whether this is premature. I mean, I, I, this seems like we're, we're kind of settling up with the homeowner with respect to whatever effect his activity has had on the roadway before he's done with the activity, and I, maybe I'm missing something, but that's kind of what I'm, I'm, I'm feeling here, so maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. And, and this is really addressed to both you, Greg, and you, Jay.
Yep, so, work will still be continuing on this project. We don't necessarily have to take the donation today, this week. I mean, it could be dated for when the construction is finished, if you would like. But yes, there still would be work occurring, I believe, through October timeframe for this particular property.
So, Greg, was it presented tonight because it would be in the Order of Conditions? Was, there's something tied to the Conservation Commission for it to be heard tonight?
Right, so the, the Order of Conditions has already been issued, but it is subject, the donation is subject to approval of select board, so that is not time-sensitive right now. So, really, this is just, you know, presentation to try to strike while the iron's hot with the applicant, to try to get the deal done, as it were. But, you know, the date on it doesn't have to be today. We just want to get it in front of you to see if the select board is willing to accept it either now or in the future.
And, and the donation we're talking about is this donation, not the trees?
Right now, it is just this donation of the road plate.
And this is part of the Order of Conditions?
Yes.
And, and I guess I'll just make one last comment here. You know, your, your sense of, I'm, to me, it sounds like he's the guy who should be in a hurry, not us. And, and I, I, but I don't know enough about it here to really be able to evaluate that. So, I'm really looking to both you and Jay for, for, you know, insight as to why that may be a misapprehension.
No, I mean, the, as far as the Order of Conditions, I mean, there is not a specific time for the donation to occur, it just has to happen before, you know, it, it's closed out. So, there is not an immediate rush on our end, or I believe the applicant's end either. You know, Jay can speak more to that, but it's really just trying to finish something that's been, definitely today, been going back and forth quite a bit, and I think we're relatively close.
Okay. Well, yeah, I, that was, yeah, do you have anything further to add to that, Jay?
I, I don't. I'm not from beyond the donation issue that I've looked at. I'm not a student and haven't been involved in any of the other--
Okay, fair enough.
--conservation matters or other issues surrounding it.
Fair enough. Yeah, go ahead, Dean.
Greg, does the, does the Order of Conditions fail if the donation doesn't take place?
No, we, we very, we talked about it internally quite a bit, and while we did not write this for the Conservation Commission, they asked our opinion on it. It's phrased such that the applicant needs to offer this donation to the town, it's up to the select board to accept or not. So, if the select board does not accept it, then the town needs to do a fairly serious assessment of what we're going to do with this project if the road plates were to be removed, and, you know, Jay and I would need to talk about how that would work.
So, I just wanted to make this comment. I mean, I, I can get by the concerns I had concerning the release clause based on the discussion tonight, but your response to Corey's question, which suggested that there potentially could be some damage that was caused to the terrain in and around this area by the, the trucking activities that have occurred thus far, and I guess could, will continue in the future, that gives me some pause as to whether it makes sense for the town to accept these plates.
Exactly, because if we did accept the plates and take all the responsibility, then, then the bond, well, some of the, the backing of why you put a performance bond out there, it would be nullified because it's, well, you guys, it's your problem now.
I think we need some more information about the bond.
Yeah, well, here's, here's, from my perspective, if, if the Order of Conditions say he's got to offer the plates to us, fine, so offer the plates to us without all of this other stuff around it, and I'm not saying, I mean, this is not about Jay, this is about the town. They are basically saying, we'll offer it to you, but we want to change our legal relationship vis-à-vis all the activity that's going on there as a condition of our offering it to us. I'd like an unconditional offer, that's what the Order of Conditions says. Give us the plates, and, and we can talk about all the other stuff that's in here some other time. That, that's kind of where I am.
The, the Order of Conditions does not state it's an unconditional offer for the road plates. The applicant is, has a substantial legal team and is very risk averse, if you will.
No, I understand, I, I get that.
But, you know, from DPW, DNR perspective, as soon as the road plates went down, which we, you know, strongly encouraged the applicant to do, it was better than it was before the road plates. So, that's where we're at.
And just to finish, and I think Jeff wants to say something, but I, from my perspective, that's great. I just think the price for the road plates is a little high here, in terms of the change of legal relationship. That, that's, that's my sort of assessment of, of what they're offering us. But Jeff, you were going to say something?
No, just, and the, the project goes on, the road plates are there, there's no, you know, detrimental impact to his progress on the project, so, and I agree with Mike, that we just see, you know, see if we can craft a different style of agreement with this guy. And just accept the road plates as a donation, and satisfy the Order of Conditions and move on without all the legal stuff. I'm not prepared to take action, Tom.
I'm not either. Nobody is.
I think we should defer this and get some more information. Now, you said, Greg, that this is, this work is going to affect other properties, not just this particular property, that the trucks are going to keep going across this area?
Right, so, this particular property is, you know, doing work now, they'll, the other properties are filing notices of intent to do similar work. So, this is going to continue. Nothing has to get settled tonight as far as the donation. If there is further, you know, negotiation back and forth regarding the donation agreement, you know, our town council and the applicant's attorney would probably work directly. That's what the consultant requested, if there was any more back and forth.
Well, I don't think we're there yet. I mean, I think I want to see, I think others, you know, what, what is the bond arrangement? Is that likely to be affected if we accept this donation? We raised the issue of wear and tear in our roadways with the 900 truckloads of stone that was going to be brought to, to Morris Island. We raised the issue early on, so I just think we need clarity, if you will, on what the repercussions for that particular roadway are, aren't. I think we probably need the plates, and he needs the plates. Okay, thanks. And I, I would add the concerns that Mike expressed about the, the legal aspects of the arrangement.
Okay. Do you, do you, do you think you have enough guidance from us as to where we would like to see this go?
I do. I mean, at, at some point, I believe, I'll get in touch with Jay again, just because I need to get in my mind how, you know, we, we don't have a preconditioned survey of the road, so trying to prove potential damages before and afterwards might be difficult.
I don't think anybody's looking for, I'm not looking for damages. I, I'm, I'm just saying, we'll take the plates, the plates stay in place, and whatever there is to be talked about in terms of the impact on the road, and who's, who's responsible, and who has to pay what, that's for down the road, that's not for now. That, that's, that's how I understand what I think the town's position ought to be.
Sure, message received.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jay.
Of course.
Okay. Next case is the EV public charging station policy. Do we have a proponent here? Is Mr. Whalen available?
Terry will be joining us, and so, the, the copy that you got today with the, or just this evening with the yellow highlights is a result of the Energy and Climate Action Committee weighing in this afternoon. They had a 3:30 meeting, and Terry is online. He'll present the policy for its second reading, as well as the comments from the Energy and Climate Action Committee.
Welcome, Terry. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Terry Whalen, Projects and Operations Administrator. And we do have also Chairman Worschafter is available here as well, from the Energy and Climate Action Committee. So, in your package for this evening's meeting, we have the second reading of the draft policy, following up on the, the previous presentation. We primarily went back and looked at a couple of key areas, and a couple of other items that came up in discussion. And in the original draft of policy, in the package that, that you have, again, focused on, on areas of providing broader application for potential to use different delivery models for public stations. And then also, in the, the second component, there were also kind of expansions and clarifications on, on items related to costs. What I'm going to do right now, though, is I'm going to pull up the, the copy for the public edification, and then also, to, to lead through the, the discussion here, I'm going to pull up the, what, let's call it the yellow version, which is, shows the, the comments that were discussed today. Oops, sorry. Hopefully, can everyone see that?
No.
You can. I'll just show it one more time. About now?
Yes, if you can enlarge it, that would--
Okay.
Yep, number one lock, yes. So, again, as the town manager just mentioned, the revised hard copy package you have reflects some discussion that happened this afternoon with the Energy and Climate Action Committee. So, the yellow highlighted, underlining, or text for insertion for the purpose, in addition to what was originally proposed in the draft you received, also includes now, when possible, associated with owning, leasing, or licensing electric vehicle EV charging stations. So, that, that new phrase, again, corresponds actually with the language in the, in the second section, excuse me, the second insertion here, which was in the original part, package, or providing coast locations to full-service EV charging station providers for public use. So, again, this just makes it even more clear that we can consider options ranging from full ownership and operation to outsourcing the provision of charging stations. So, everything from construction through operation and management, preventive maintenance. And then in the, some additional recommendations from-- And then in the, some additional recommendations from the Energy and Climate Action Committee included adding the word fee to policy, which in our discussions, and as if you hopefully noted in my staff report, really anticipating that we're going to come back, or there will be a need to revise the policy, something along the lines of location policy. As was alluded to in some of your earlier discussions related to the results of the Cape Cod Commission Circulation Study, and maybe including input from Parking Solutions Working Group, and/or the Climate, excuse me, Energy and Climate Action Committee related to maybe the distribution or potential sites for, to identify to, or target for public EV charging stations moving forward. So, again, here's some additional language, the yellow over what was in the original package. So again, the first reference here is for capital costs, to acknowledge any investment that the town might have made for hard infrastructure. And then, after the original proposal, it was also recommended, suggested that the language, and basically this is language from the staff report, indicating from the fiscal impact section, that we specifically note that where the fees go and that they will be deposited into the town's general fund. And then the final, under authority, we also had a discussion this afternoon, this was, in the meeting package that you received, was not proposed to be changed, but after our discussion this afternoon, there was discussion on clarifying or making clear the intent of an annual review on a minimum of an annual basis and propose adjusting fees on an as-needed basis. So the intent here is to acknowledge that this is a new enterprise that we will be embarking on, that kind of built in a, you know, a check, but then also acknowledging that there might be other situations that really mandate looking at things, maybe conditions of the marketplace, or other changes in electric rates, or delivery issues, again, keeping the as-needed basis. So hopefully, that's clarifies what is on top of what was already explained in the staff report. And I can entertain any questions, or the chair, or also Bob, I'm sure can weigh in, especially on the ECAC comments.
Yeah, thank you, I'm looking at the clock, so I'm going to try to make these very quick. Elaine Gibbs raised a couple of interesting points, I thought. One had to do with the policy of locating future charging stations. The document doesn't particularly address that. Is that, I mean, my preference would be that the ultimate decision on those locations would be up to the Select Board, perhaps on the recommendation of the town manager or the Energy and Climate Action Committee. Where do we stand on that issue?
Well, we do need to have, A, the report in, and I was trying to articulate in the staff report that anticipating that we would need to come back, quite frankly, to add that section, and most likely now with the, from my opinion, great input from the committee, on, you know, we would have a fee policy and a location policy paragraph that would articulate where, you know, preferred locations are. So, but that does need further work, as we've discussed, and as I referenced in the staff report, you know, would be best informed by having additional discussion and review of the, you know, for the final findings for the Cape Cod Commission Report, and then additional coordination recommendations from the ECAC and/or the Parking Solutions Board as part of a proposal, a further proposal, or a specific proposal to the Select Board.
So this document may possibly bear a third reading rather than being adopted tonight?
I was trying to set up, and I'll, I see, Jill, I defer, I was trying to point out that I think in anticipation that this, you know, policy might need to evolve moving forward, that we're not ready to make a decision on locations at this point, as we need further discussion, but that from a timing perspective, ideally, this would be in place prior to the Eldridge Garage, former Eldridge Garage property stations coming online.
Yeah, that was our attention with the, so first of all, it's that the Eldridge Garage charging stations will be energized, I believe, by the end of, either end of this month or next month, we're waiting for Eversource to finish the install. So that, and the town has purchased the, the charging stations, and so we don't have a mechanism on how to charge. And so that was the, I guess, the inception of this policy, was to get through that. After further consideration of, and we don't have other locations already identified, we'll need to come back to the board for those locations for your approval, but we need this policy primarily for the Eldridge Garage charging stations.
I guess my response to that would be, I'd rather see, if we have to take action either tonight or at our next meeting in two weeks, I'd rather see an interim policy for the Eldridge Garage property that would, that would go away once we have a more comprehensive policy that deals with location as well as fees. That's my thought. The other point that Ms. Gibbs raised, and I'll be in a second, Jeff, she talked about, basically, how do you enforce, there's nothing here about enforcing against abuse by duration of time. We know at the Eldridge Garage property, at least in the in-season, the valet people are going to enforce that because they're going to move cars around, but there probably should be some language in, about that in the document. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Jeff? I want to see more muscle on the bone here, if you will, and more detail on the fees, the fee policy. They're going to be up and active and live, what are we charging, how are we charging? How do we develop our fees? Do we have other towns to go to use as a template? But I really need to see, you know, what we're charging here. We're going to have live stations, you know, what's going on? I think we need more detail, to be honest with you. I know this is a policy about, oh, okay, we can charge a fee, but what are those fees going to be, and do we recruit our investment, and blah, blah, blah? I mean, there's more work to be done here, I think. Thanks.
Cory? Simply stated, I'm not going to make a decision tonight on this. I think the proposals that are put in place that were presented to us tonight, which were not in the packet, that were not available for public comment to weigh in one way or another, would be bad policy for us to act on it. I think they're generally fine. I think Jeff brings up some very good points. I'd like to see another draft or some kind of version come out that we're crystal clear on, and we vote on it. That's the pure mechanics of it, so I appreciate all this input right now, I'm not going to vote for any policy tonight.
I'm going to concur.
Yeah, I'm going to concur, I'm going to say, I understand the desire to have a policy in place for the Eldridge Garage. I think it would be instructive to address the issues that Jeff is articulating for you, if it's coming from you, to come back to us and say, this is, this is what we're proposing to do specifically with respect to fees at the Eldridge Garage, and then we can incorporate that into the policy rather than the other way around. So I'm not ready to do anything tonight either, so.
And I think we can show that calculation pretty easily for the Eldridge Garage and add the location section that would probably just be a two-liner, basically, for at the Select Board's approval. Terry, I know that he and Kathy worked and reviewed many of the other towns' policies. I know that was sort of lost on tonight's discussion because we presented it before. Terry, do you have any last words on establishing the fees before we move on?
Yeah, well, yeah, on the fees, and then I do want to address the other public comment as well, but just, yeah, so again, if you want more detail, we can put, you know, what the surrounding towns are charging in their methodology. So again, we have collected that data, and then we have, so yeah, we can do that. And then also, I just want to add that regarding the duration of the, if you recollect, we did have some samples of signs in the previous iteration of the staff report of, and we did talk about this a little bit even with the ECAC as well, is making sure that, be very clear on what additional authorities, so again, in the actual implementation of the signs, as was pointed out by the police chief when we talked about it, making sure that the fines and/or if there's an ability maybe to tow cars away that are in a location, so that we could bring back more clarity on that. And then just to the broader question of, let's call it, overuse, or people who are staying in a spot for a longer time, generally, the part of a fee structure typically includes, let's call it a more punitive approach of, because all is, it happens in kind of a Wi-Fi environment, and maybe the chair, because had brought this up in an earlier discussion where we talked about, the ability to charge a, kind of a penalty fee as your, if your car is done and you do not disconnect and pull out, that you are charged a rate that discardes you from staying in that location.
Yeah, it's very similar to anyone who's had childcare and is late to pick up their kid. You get charged by the minute, and it's a fairly high fee, and it seems to work to get, you know, people to move their cars. It's standard in all, all use agreements that I've ever connected to.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thanks very much, Terry. Thanks, Bob.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Appointments, Conservation Commission.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move to appoint Robert Delucchio as a member of the Conservation Commission until June 30, 2027, unless sooner or later he votes, or his successor is appointed.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And the Cultural Committee?
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Ann Wade as a member of the Cultural Council until June 30, 2027, unless sooner or later her successor is appointed.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
And Mr. Matters?
Aye.
I think that concludes our public agenda. Can I invite you, Mr. Nacastro, to move us to executive session?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board, the Select Board, go into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30, I, Section 21, parentheses, 3, close parenthesis, "to discuss strategy with respect to litigation," parentheses, "32 Mill Hill Road," close parenthesis, "if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares with no return to open session."
And the chair so declares.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Okay. We are in executive session.